I have some difficulties, hold on.
Technical difficulties.
Take your time.
Stand by for technical difficulties.
All right.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Concord Township Zoning Commission for Tuesday, July 1, 2025. If you would join me by standing and pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heather, could you pull us over a roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Mr. Schindler?
Present.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Wirtow?
Here.
Mr. Repper?
Here.
We are all here. Thank you gentlemen for doing that. Approval of minutes, we don't have any, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. But we will have them for next month. Right?
I will have to check with the stenographer.
Okay. Correspondence. Frank, anything?
None, Mr. Chairman.
I actually had a property owner reach out to me that is looking to potentially develop his property. And he asked for some guidance. I haven't met with him yet. Tried to set a meeting with me to find, kind of look over his property with him and kind of see if he's in compliance with, you know, what he's in with compliance with and what he's not. Like I said, I've not met with him yet. He did have a confidentiality clause on the email that he sent me when he reached out. So after I get through that process and get together and get some more information, I'll make sure that I share it with Heather and you guys as well.
Okay. Rich, hi, please.
Mr. Chairman, I've had some internal correspondence really with Heather and with Bridie that perhaps it's appropriate for new business. Section 36 that I spoke with you about, Bridie, and new business. So I have an item under new business, okay? Yeah, thank you.
Rich, please.
I had nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I had nothing. So that takes care of correspondence. Zoning inspector report. Heather?
I do not have one this evening.
Okay, none. Public participation. Do you have anybody on the phone?
No.
Seeing none, we can move on. New business, we will take yours after, if that's okay?
Please.
Okay, we have a public hearing for our proposed amendment. Everybody has their package from last month. So if we can, what I'd like to do is open a public hearing and then we'll go on to amendment one. We have to approve each one of them. So we will discuss it. If we have to read it. Do I have to read everything, Bridie? Do I have to read it?
No.
No? Okay, it becomes public briefing. If it's short, we'll read it. If not, we'll just have it as part of the agenda. Okay, number, okay, I'd like to open a public hearing. Can I do that with a hammer? And let's move on to amendment number one, which is revised section six. General requirements as follows. Revised section 6.01B agriculture uses and new section 6.02K prohibited uses. So if you look at your package, you can see what we did to section 6. 01 agriculture uses. And... 6.02, no wait, no wait, I have it on 02. Let me see. 6.02, there it is. Any comments? On 6.02, we have a prohibited use. Hearing no comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
Do you want to do it at the end of the public hearing?
This is a public hearing.
Yeah, maybe at the end, when, maybe when you close out the public hearing. I mean, or go into the regular meeting, back into the regular meetings, but maybe even make a motion. Because I understand that the public hearing is more for the discussion and looking for the public comment.
I have to exit our meeting?
Yeah, the public hearing. So we go through...
Once we get finished.
We hear any comments from the public? We got to go through them all, then we close. Then we can move to approve.
So I have to read them all and then go back one by one?
To approve.
To approve.
After you close the public hearing.
Okay. We open, so amendment number two. Revised section 11.01 zoning permit required. Amendment number three. Revised section 13 conditional use permit. Amendment number four. Revised section 15.02 table, 15.02-1, table of uses. Amendment number five. Add new section 18 small solar energy systems. Amendment number six. Add new section 19 electric vehicle charging stations. Amendment number seven. Revised section 22.03 table of uses for commercial and industrial districts and revised 22.10A capital district standards. Amendment number eight. Delete section 32 gas and oil regulations. Amendment number nine. Delete section 33 satellite receiving antennas dash dish type. Now, we go back and read it, read each amendment over again?
We're still in public hearing.
Yes, we are, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're still in public hearing. Mr. Chairman, I think it would be wise to indicate that if there is nobody in the audience as far as the public is concerned this evening. Hand on the phone. Right, hand on the phone. Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
I'd like to mention that there are no personnel in the room for the public hearing. And also, there is nobody on the phone for the public hearing. We go to amendment one. We close the public, I thought we had to vote in the public hearing.
No, sir.
No.
Ms. Matheny.
Since there's no input from the public, then we made note that they're not here. At this point, we can close the public hearing. We can close the public hearing, okay? With that, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. Now, we go each one, discussions, and then vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Amendment number one. Revised section six general requirements as follows. Revised section 6.01B agriculture uses and add a new section 6.02K prohibited uses. Any questions from the commission? Hearing none? Mr. Chairman, I would think that as we go through this and since we have the document in front of us and we've had the work session as of June 3, that we should make note that the document in front of us has been revised and has been edited with the red lettering through each sentence indicating the appropriate language change. This year, you won't have to go through reading this whole thing, it would take us all night. I think if we agree to go through with the changes as indicated in red for each amendment, I think that would be adequate for the passage of the document. Okay. As if legal counsel agrees with me?
Yeah, that's fine. These have been available, right, Heather, for anyone to view on the website?
Yes, it's on the website, yeah.
We've already had our discussion on that.
Yes, sure.
A few times.
Yeah.
A few times. The only thing we would probably add to it at this point is the recommendations and comments from the Lake County Planning Commission. Whenever we have those comments. Whenever we get to that part. Insert that. And then we can discuss that. Correct.
So when we make a motion to approve, we make a motion to approve with, as the edited version sits in front of us, right? With red line and comments, right?
That's correct.
That's right. And don't forget, this is a recommendation from them.
Yeah, I understand that.
We don't have to accept it.
We don't have to do that section, but what we've already gone through was already edited. When we make a motion for each amendment, then we're going to make it as edited
Correct.
and discussed
Correct.
and approved at this, the last, our June 3 meeting.
Correct. Okay.
There were no comments from the county on this particular one.
None on this one.
I'll make a motion to approve amendment one as documented in our notes.
Do I have a second? I second, Mr. Chairman. Heather? Call a vote?
Can you draw a call on that? Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes.
Mr. Wirtow?
Yes.
That's the end of amendment one. Amendment number two has to do with section 11 zoning permit. We have the changes in front of you. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, assuming there are no objections, to approve amendment number two, revision to section 11.01 zoning permit required as presented.
I'll second that.
Heather, please.
Mr. Wirtow?
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes. Amendment number two is approved. Amendment number three. Revised section 13 conditional use permit. We have a lot of red on this one, but most of the red is renumbering. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept amendment number three as revised in our packet. Revised section 13 conditional use permit.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Heather, if you would, please.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes.
Mr. Wirtow?
Yes.
Amendment number four. Amendment number three is approved. Amendment number four, revised section 15.02 table 15.02-1, table of uses. Any discussion? I'd like to entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve amendment number four as revised.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Wirtow?
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
And Mr. Repper?
Yes. Amendment number four is approved. Amendment number five. Add new section 18 small solar energy systems.
We do have a comment on this from the county.
Add small solar energy systems as an accessory use in section 15.03.
I assume that's a typo, section 18.03, I assume? Is that a typo, Heather?
Well, do they want any accessory uses of the table? Because that...
Oh.
But it's there, we have it added. As an accessory. So I don't know why they, that didn't make sense to me. If you look in page 15.4 residential districts as you grow up, accessory use is under table 15.02, but it gets to 15.03 accessory uses. We have it added as small sort facility and it's accessory across the board. And it refers to section 18.
Right, so we've done that.
15.03. It's 15.02.
Is it possible you foresaw this, Heather, and put it in here?
No, that was in there. They were recommending, so, and you don't have it here in your package, but if you have your entire zoning resolution with you, you would see that section 15.03 lists some of the accessory uses that have special standards. But we put all the special standards for small solar in section 18, which we did cross-reference in this table. So I think we do not need to add it in section 15.03. Because we're covered right here.
Okay, I agree. So...
Any further discussion?
No, but I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, with no objection, if no objections, to amendment number five. Add new section 18 small solar energy systems as presented in our package.
In our package, yes. Do I have a second? I second, Mr. Chairman. Heather, please.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes.
Mr. Wirtow?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes. Amendment number five is approved. Amendment number six. Add section 19 electric vehicle charging stations. And we have a comment from the county planning. And that comment is, "Review to make sure that setback for the electric vehicle charging stations is compliant with parking setbacks." And Heather, I think you have some comments on this one also?
Oh, well, I mean, I looked at, so, in section 18, what we're proposing for the setbacks...
Section 19?
Oh, rather, yes, sorry, I apologize. Section 19, in section 19.04, the proposed section, we're stating that the chart, that the station has to be at least 10 feet away from any property line. So with our, most of our commercial district setbacks for the parking lot, it's a minimum 25-foot setback from the front and minimum 10-foot side yard setbacks unless you have a shared parking agreement, shared access driveway. So I think you just have to comply with both. So if you built your parking lot, if you have an existing parking lot and your parking spaces are right at the minimum setback of 10 feet, then you might have to ask for a variance because the structure is going to be probably within the 10 feet because you're going to put it right outside the parking stall. But if you're building a new parking lot, you can accommodate that and maybe you set your parking lot, you know, 12 feet, that would give you that two extra feet or whatever you might need in order to put the, if you're planning on putting any EV charging station in the parking lot.
New parking lots, charging stations are usually almost towards the road anyways.
Okay.
And especially in shopping centers.
They want them up front.
They want them up front, exactly right. So I could see, the 10-foot makes sense to me, actually.
Okay.
Off of a property line like that, because that's how I see the majority of them being designed that way.
Oh, okay.
So that makes a lot of sense to me. But I like that you're going in with that too.
Well, right, because our minimum front-back for the, front setback from the street from the parking lot is 25, so that's plenty of room to do that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Does the note, next note where it talks about locations of the gas wells also apply here?
That probably under amendment eight is one of us, you know?
I don't know, it doesn't say.
I don't know.
It doesn't say which one it's in. It just continues from the one above, I thought. A setback, in other words, not having charging stations near gas well.
I thought that was...
A good comment.
Well, no, you're right, because amendment eight would delete the section.
I thought, my interpretation was the third comment from them was just kind of in response to us leading section 32, although it's not directly related, but...
Okay.
Because townships do have the ability to regulate new construction in relationship to an existing gas well. We just cannot regulate where the gas well is replaced. So if we have an existing gas well and someone's building a new development, we could put in a setback saying the house has to be X amount of feet away from the gas well. That is my interpretation of what they're asking us to potentially look at. That's not something that we've really discussed during many of these work sessions. My recommendation would be if that's something that the board wants to consider, that we could take that on as a separate amendment.
Oh, separate.
Because that would take a little bit more research than what we would want to do, I think, this evening, that we can get through this evening, you know, obviously. It's somewhat unrelated, I think, to what we're proposing.
Any further comments on amendment six?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had, John had brought up some questions that I think that we resolved during our discussion.
We did, and...
Last month.
And Heather also provided some information from the fire department.
Right, right. But the one...
Oh, the canopies.
Yeah. Shall not include overhead canopies, I still have a question mark.
Right. Did we... We didn't resolve that. I mean, they did, the fire department did comment on it.
Yeah.
And they did say why, right? But they didn't, they still don't believe there should be canopies over the top of them at all, right?
That was my understanding.
Right, the existing resolution that we already have in place also has the same requirement on there. And it was a recommendation from the fire department to not permit these to be located under canopies. And my interpretation, really based on what I read from everything, is trying to eliminate risk for the spread of that, so... I understand we don't have existing parking garages right now in Concord. I know a lot of the information that was sent over was more germane to parking garages, but I think their thought process is the same thing, trying to eliminate the spread, potential spread if there is an incident.
Any other discussion?
I have a question on my notes about annual inspection. Who's going to do it? Is that the fire department that's going to do that?
I believe that it's on the property owner to have them inspected.
That's what we decided?
Yes.
That's all I had.
We did, I wasn't sure whether we want to include that. I think you answered that, Heather, I apologize, I don't, 1903C, EVCS shall comply, et cetera, et cetera, shall be inspected once a year by, by the owner? Was it necessary to say that? I think was a question.
Yeah, was a question.
I don't know if we need to say that or not, maybe Bridie would have a thought on that.
A 1903C, Bridie?
Well, we don't want the owner themselves to do the inspection. What are they going to do, walk up to and go, "Well, everything looks good," but... They're responsible to make sure that the proper entity is getting, you know, is inspecting.
And who is that? I think that's what we're asking.
I'm not sure who you hire to inspect EV charging stations, I really don't know.
Would it be the fire department though?
No.
No.
No. Just like, you know.
Well, you have to have it installed by a licensed electrician, right?
Correct, yes.
Maybe the county, but...
So if he's already licensed by the state, I can see if he comes in once a year, you have him come in once a year and inspected. That should be okay, I would think.
Who would inspect it, Frank? Who would do it?
A licensed inspector, an electrician.
How do you monitor that, or how do you...
I thought, again, I'm waiting on legal counsel, but the next sentence says the proof shall be made available authority, which I assume is the fire department.
If they want to see it, yes.
If they want to see it, so... I'm just suggesting that we need to say by the owner. How the owner does that, what, it's up to the owner, but the proof needs to be provided, if requested, so... So the requirement here is to have the owner do this annually, inspect it annually.
By the licensed inspector of EV charging stations.
Something like that.
Kind of like the backflow inspection on your sprinkler.
Oh, my gosh, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Exactly.
Somebody has to inspect your backflow on your sprinkler and submit it to, in this case, my case.
Do we have to add that?
I mean, ask Bridie.
So we want to clarify that the property owner shall have the EVCS inspected once a year. So maybe just change that sentence to, after the words, "Ohio fire code", and the property owner shall have the EVCS inspected once a year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I don't know who it's by, so I'm kind of hesitant to say who actually is...
Yeah, I would be hesitant as well, because we're not the authority.
Well, I wouldn't think that it'd have to be, it has to be someone that has electrical experience.
Right.
I mean, let's face it, plug-in is electric. So I would think that if you have a licensed electrician, if they are licensed by the state, there's your, there's a qualified person. It's not the homeowner, unless maybe he is an electrician.
Yeah.
You know, if he is an electrician...
I would say qualified third party, because there might be electricians that don't do that.
Yeah.
I don't know that, actually. I don't know that answer, so I think...
Qualified third party.
Qualified third party is a great way to say that.
That's true, covers everything then.
Does.
Right? You would have to have some kind of certification.
So, no, that's fine. So do you want to add it as, so after the words again, "Ohio fire code", and we add, "The property owner shall have the EVCS inspected by a qualified third party?"
Yes.
Once a year?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that we're going to get questions on that in the zoning department when we, who's a qualified third party, but...
Well, there again, you always have electrical work.
Well, if I think of, you have qualified excavators within communities, you have qualified companies that can install water lines and sewer lines, and so you can, we can present that.
Okay.
I would think so.
Yep. Are you more comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yes. I agree.
So could somebody come then for a variance on a canopy of an electrical charging station if they wanted to put one in?
Yes.
They could?
Yes.
Okay. That I'm comfortable with, as it says, because I think they could prove I can't, I'm lost in words.
Safety.
Safety, or they can, yeah, they could demonstrate a need.
Not hazards.
Not hazards, right.
Right.
Okay.
Health, safety, and welfare of the community.
That's what, yeah, that's what you approve, right? For variance, something like that.
That's what you have to prove for them.
So, Mr. Chairman, perhaps an amendment to the amendment, wait a minute, it gets to that. This isn't amendment. What's proper here? We're approving an amendment, Bridie, but we want to modify the amendment.
So when we go to, what was it, it's section, so it's amendment number six. We're adding new section 19 electric vehicle charging station with the proposed change to 19.03C. And we can, we can actually say, if you wanted to say the entire sentence there, we can do that.
But you don't have to say the entire sentence, you can stop that with the proposed change to section C.
That's fine, right, I've written it down, I'm sure Heather has too. And then obviously the fire department is taking it down.
That's what I have, okay. So Heather, could you read 19.03C as amended to the amendment?
Sure.
You got it?
Yes.
Oh, she did.
So EVCS shall comply with the current national... So EVCS shall comply with the current National Electric Code, NEC, and the Ohio Fire Code. And the property owner shall have the EVCS inspected by a qualified third party once a year.
Perfect.
Perfect.
And then.
Sounds good to me.
So now we can say the same thing as amended in our packet?
Correct.
Correctly?
Yes.
Perfect, because that was the mouth.
Yeah.
We would still, I'm sorry, just to clarify, we'd still keep in that second sentence, proof of inspection shall be made available to the.
We decide on public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Amendment Number Six as revised in our packet.
As modified this evening, right? Yeah.
I'll second the motion for approval of Amendment Six.
Mr. Wirtal?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Ruppert?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Eifel?
Ice, yes. Ice, yes. I don't know where that came from.
Amendment Number Seven. I think that was very good discussion.
It was.
Very good. Thank you for bringing that up. Amendment Number Seven, revised Section 22.03, Table of Uses for Commercial and Industrial Districts, and revised 22.10(a) Capitol District Standards.
Mr. Chairman, there are no objections. I would like to recommend the approval of Amendment Seven, revised Section 22.03, Table of Uses for Commercial and Industrial Districts, and revised 22.10(a) Capitol District Standards, as amended in our packet.
I'll second that.
Heather, please.
Mr. Eifel?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
See, I was just saying it right there.
Mr. Ruppert?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Wirtal?
Yes.
Amendment Number Seven is approved. Moving on, Amendment Number Eight, Delete Section 32, Gas and Oil Regulations.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take a leap in faith and make a motion to approve Amendment Number Eight, Delete Section 32, Gas and Oil Regulations.
And I will second that leap of faith.
Heather, another leap of faith over there?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Eifel?
Yes.
Mr. Wirtal?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Ruppert?
Yes.
Amendment Number Nine, Delete Section 33, Satellite Receiving Antennas-Dish Type. Any discussion?
Break is discussion.
I have a discussion?
No.
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 May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, yes, another leap in faith. I will make a motion to approve Amendment Number Nine to delete Section 33, Satellite Receiving Antennas-Dish Type.
And I will, and I will second the Amendment Number Nine passage, as proposed.
Heather, please.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Eifel?
Yes.
Mr. Wirtal?
Yes.
Mr. Ruppert?
Yes.
Amendment Number Nine is approved. We're very close to public hearing. We'll go on to Mr. Eifel's new business.
Thanks for all the work on this, Heather, for those amendments. Thank you.
Well done.
For my colleagues here on the board, I had, it was actually subsequent to last month's meeting, asked Heather if there was anything coming up on the future agenda in terms of site plan. And she mentioned a project in the Capitol District. Exploring it further, I had thought, when a proposal from an applicant or developer was based upon a conditional use, it was not a permitted use in a zoning district, that it would first come before this board. And I thought that's how Section 36 was written, so that we would hear or provide some feedback to the applicant on the perspectives of what we think of the conditional use in an area where it's not permitted use. And I thought we had modified Section 36 to reflect that. And those of you who, obviously, most of us other John, were here for the Sheets project, that applicant came in as a pre-proposal.
Right.
And we declined the use of that property for, for that purpose. And it culminated in it going forward, going back to the BZA, and then coming back to us. So I had thought in Section 36 that we had, and I know you probably don't have it in front of you, but 3603, Section 3603, Section 36, first of all, is site plan review. In 36.03, we have a section called the Informal Review Process that, correct me if I'm wrong, Heather, precedes, I know it precedes me, I think it was adopted in 2018?
I'm sorry, what's it called again?
Informal Review Process. The, the purpose is to discuss early and informally with the applicant the intent and effect of the zoning regulations and the criterion standards contained within them. It is recommended that prior to incur any, any expense associated with preparing and submitting a detailed site plan for consideration, the prospective applicant meets for an informal review with the zoning inspector. At the discretion of the zoning inspector, proposed projects may be subject to an informal review at a regularly scheduled zoning commission meeting.
It's not required, correct?
Correct. That, and Brighty, again, correct me if I'm misspeaking here.
Sure, yep.
So, and so when I went back to review 3603, I said, oh, it's not required to do that. So, so we have conditions, and I just put it up for consideration if we wanted to pursue this further. I'm bothered by it that a project can go forward bypassing this board and going directly for a conditional use to the BZ, and then we're, our hands, again legally, are tied. Our hands are tied for only site plan review and approval, which is what occurred with the Sheets project.
So I love to come on in that, if I may.
Yes, please. I think I'm done. That's kind of what I wanted.
I think in trying to put myself in the property owner, the developer's position, and trying to look at it from their perspective, informal meetings and ones that are not required are done with a certain degree of confidentiality, right? You're not putting it out into the public because a lot of what can happen, again, and I'm just trying to put myself in somebody else's shoes. And I've been there before. I guess probably why it's, it's very distracting too. You know, sitting down with Heather and having a conversation, which I know developers do all the time, right? I mean, or have done in the past. They tried to, because I've done, I've done this in this, in this very community. You know, I used, when Rush Adelik was here. So, so there's a lot that can be done, that, that, a lot of advice that can be given, and a lot of good that can come from those meetings. And sometimes, and I know, I think I can kind of understand from the commission's perspective, but it's still, a lot of good could happen early on with those meetings on both sides, for the community and, and as well for the developer, right? If it became a now formal meeting to come to us first, right? That, that settlement, you might, you might get a big public pushback without knowing all the information, right? Because it's, they haven't gone that far down the path yet on developing it. So to go to BZA, they meet with them first, then we still have a final say in it. We don't have, on the project, we do.
Correct. It's only on the site plan. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, Brighty, but I was, we were, I believe, litigated against on the Sheets because we rejected the site plan.
Yeah, I was not used to that, but I think that's.
Yeah. So what, what occurred, John, was we voted unanimously against having that in the Capitol District.
No, no, it wasn't. Wasn't it three to two, or?
It was unanimous. In the, when they came for site plan, it wasn't unanimous. It was still four to one. They came for a site plan, we still rejected it.
Okay.
But it was based on the principle that, well, we refused, how, how could we approve something we just rejected? Okay. We, we, again, the board voted to reject it again. And legal had advised, well, you kind of like, you're, you're in the position of only site plan once you, the BZA had approved the conditional use. That's what the ruling was. Am I correct again, Heather? It's pretty much how the Sheets thing came down. We were, we were only resigned to approve the site plan and comment, not prove, but comment on the site plan. We could not, could not consider that this is not in keeping what the vision of the Capitol District was, which is a mixed-use residential-commercial type development, which hasn't come to pass.
I think, like, the BZA's job as part of reviewing the conditional use permit is to kind of lean into a little bit about, like, what you're suggesting, looking at the comprehensive plan, how does it fit in with the comprehensive plan?
Right.
But once the BZA approves the use, the use is a permitted use. And that's what Rich is saying.
That's what I'm saying.
We have to approve it. You can't say no to the use, but you do have give and take on the site plan.
So give and take on the site plan is, oh, okay, setback, the driveway. It's still going to get a use because they, they receive it in a planned area. And I'm using the Capitol District, definitely because it's occurring again.
Sure is, right.
Right now.
So if.
Again, a conditional use of something.
If we did, if, if, if we did have a say in it, right, or if we did have a informal meeting, what, what does that, and if we're against it, they, they still can go to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Correct, correct.
And so we're just adding a step to the process that ultimately could end up with them just going to Board of Zoning Appeals anyways and getting it approved?
As, as I think our board, we would respect the, the reviews and opinions of another board. I would think they would honor us as well, if we had a voice or opinion, even though.
But in that meeting, we did tell Sheets, we had some, some requirements, the height of their.
Yeah, that's right.
And they agreed, everything we asked them to do, they agreed to do.
They did.
Which is why I voted in favor, but I was the one guy that voted in favor. But they did cooperate with us on everything.
Yeah.
And then they went down there and got the approval that they needed, and then they came back here.
That's right.
And we kind of didn't like it.
Yeah.
But it was a constructive meeting. I would say it was a constructive meeting.
They are, they usually are.
Yeah.
Right?
But.
But I guess that's what I'm saying. So all we're doing is adding another level of meetings to that process for.
So I, I understand, John, all we're doing.
Yeah, I understand.
We are the zoning.
I understand.
Commission.
But we also have to respect the Board of Zoning Appeals and their position.
Correct. So if, I guess I'm asking this board, if we are comfortable that an applicant can, does not have to come to this board first, seeks a conditional use, and then we have no, we really have no voice. It's only in the site plan. Which, Rich is right, they did accommodate a lot of our, all of it.
Yeah.
I, I objected that process, because that's what I thought we were on this board to do, think about planning and zoning, but.
And it's not that I disagree with you, it's just I'm trying to see everybody's position.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I really am. I'm trying to, layers are, you know, if we want to, if we want to welcome business into our community, right, it's, it's, it's an arduous task to develop a piece of property beginning with. It's not easy, right? And I understand that. And again, I'm not minimizing this board. Please, I want everybody to understand that. I'm just trying to put myself in everybody's shoes, whether it be a resident, whether it be a developer.
You bring up a good point about the confidentiality, too. They have to have a meeting with Heather, and that's her job.
Right.
And that's confidential at that level. She then can decide whether it's important enough that she wants to bring it here.
Now, in, in our zoning, in that reg, does it say that if she says that it has to come to the zoning commission, then they have to do that?
At her discretion, yes.
No?
And one thing we have to realize that our meetings are open to the public and is published on TV. So we can't have the confidentiality if it's pouring right out the door, when you can see on the TV.
But if Heather, Heather makes a recommendation, it has to become, has to come before this commission, well, then there is. Then they have to say.
We're covered.
Well, I don't think we're doing, we're asking the contractor to do any more work on this preliminary sit-down. They should have all that work there already, if they're going to go to the BZA first. They ought to have the same information coming here.
I have to go look through with the regulate, with the requirements, so I'd go to Board of BZA. And I, and I have not done that. This just got brought up, but I will do that.
Well, but I think they have to have the same.
Same.
Same information?
Almost. I can't say everything, but the same type of information should come here, or would come here under that preliminary information, preliminary meeting, as they would have to go to the BZA.
Particularly if the request is for a conditional use. They would need to have a lot of good information.
Can we, can we do it where they can run those meetings concurrently, so they don't have to have one month and then wait another month to have that meeting? Can we do it so they can run it concurrently? When does BZA?
When does BZA meet?
BZA meets the second Wednesday of every month.
So if they make it for the first Tuesday?
Right. It covers it.
It covers it.
But they would have already had to submit all their stuff prior to, you know, your meeting actually commencing. So they would have already had to file for the BZA application. Everything would have already had been submitted before they even met with you. So keep so any comments that they might have received from you, they would not have any time to do anything about.
Do anything.
Because they would have already submitted something else.
And also keep in mind that the Ohio General Assembly has given really the BZA the power to grant conditional use. It's not the zoning commission. So when I say that, what your power is, is to change the text and make amendments as to what the conditional uses are that are here in the township. So that's the process, and that's actually the role of the zoning commission again. The BZAs expressly provided by statute, they can grant conditional uses.
And/or variances.
Correct. Other things, too. They can also hear appeals, you know, based on zoning, it's winter error. They have very specific grant of power that's very different than what the zoning commission has granted of power.
Well, if recall, we, we spent a lot of time on conditional uses. And I thought we did in the Capitol District. I thought we did.
Yeah, we did.
I love the fact that you brought it up and had Heather discussing it, because that's what we're.
And I, I mean, I, I agree with Brighty's comment. I mean, obviously, our authority lies in the text and the resolution. If we, if this, if that, let me ask this, Brighty, then. So if the conditional use was not there, listed as a C, can the applicant still apply variant, to variant, for a variance? Does it come under the word variance?
Yes, if it's not a permitted use, right?
It's not a permitted use, so that's a variance. So they still can bypass us and go to the BZA.
Well, again, not bypass you. I wouldn't say it that way. But I get why you're saying it.
I'm selfishly saying that. You're right. I understand.
But truly, they're not required.
But it's good discussion for continuity on the board, you know, because John wouldn't have known. Good discussion for continuity on the board, just.
Again, and don't think me, just because I'm saying something, you know, different, or I just want to make sure that. Somebody has a voice, too, right? That's, that's, it's all of our job, just to make sure that everybody has a voice and to have these discussions. Because I love the fact that you brought that up, and again, and I have been there, and I understand that. And I, and I get the reason, and I kind of remember distinctly that, that, that BZA does have an authority, right? And it's not, it's higher, higher stuff than us, right?
It's just a different step.
Different step, right, exactly, right. Not higher, but different step.
Yeah, think of it this way. You, you, your role as the zoning commission, you're like the legislative. I mean, in the sense that, yes, I know it has to go to trustees, too, to get approval, but you are the legislator of the text. You are the lawmakers, if you will. You are writing the law. The BZA is the judicial branch, right? Trustees are the executive branch. That's kind of how I would think of it, if you're thinking of, you know, our government and kind of what, what we do.
That's very well said. Okay.
But, Rich, you brought it up because you're concerned about just the way the process breaks down with.
Yeah.
So how can we get through making you feel better?
Well, it's, it's, I think it's to Brighty's point. Well, it's, it's, I think it's to Brighty's point, it's the legislative aspect of it, to focus and concentrate on where we don't want to see, even though, where we don't want conditional uses, and what conditional uses there are in certain districts, certain zoning districts.
Yeah.
I get it.
I think the only way probably maybe we might be able, a lot of governments go to executive session or closed section, where we all get together as a group and voice our concerns. Can something like that be set up?
Avoid the sunshine law?
Can zoning collision go into executive session? Not possibly. BZA is allowed to deliberate outside of the public because they're considered a quasi-judicial branch, but can you go into executive session? I think, I think you can. You have to have a specific reason, though, and there's only eight specific reasons to go into executive session. That might be tough.
Yeah, that might be tough.
Here, talking about zoning.
Yeah.
But we do have to meet one of those, one of those eight reasons to go into executive session.
Threat of litigation is...
Well, the object is, we can look into it at least. Just a thought.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to voice that, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for indulging me.
I think it's a good discussion, too, to be had.
Yeah. Do we want to look at that any, anymore?
I'm, I'm kind of satisfied with the discussion that we have to focus on the text, the resolution. If there is a particular zoning district we want to say, "Thou shalt not be a conditional use here," we should do something.
And that would only be looking at the table?
Yes, yeah, yeah, and per, per district, yes.
Per district.
Yes.
We did that to some degree before we just did, too.
We, we did, yeah, we did.
And I'm sure we're going to look at it again.
Again.
Maybe not this board, but this board, but not the same people on the board now. Okay. Any other new, any other new business? We have an old business on the books that's been tabled until July 26, if not sooner. So we can go through that.